Couple of minutes early, but it looks like people are here and assembled. So I'm going to call the September 12th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Thank you all for coming. The Planning Commission is the body that is appointed by the town council to make decisions or recommendations regarding land use in Los Gatos. Anything from as simple as a, used to be, tree removal, or a second story addition to a major development in the town. And when we do that, we're guided by principles that are given to us by the town in policies, ordinances, and from public input we get at meetings. So thank you all very much for attending. And the way we do it when we get to the public hearing process is that we'll call up an applicant on the project, we'll give them a certain amount of time to speak, and then anyone else who wants to speak on it will give you that time too, and there'll be questions from Planning Commissioners. And a little housekeeping also before we start. If you have an electronic device, we would very much appreciate it if you would either turn it off, or at least put it on silent, because it can be distracting if it goes off. So we'd appreciate that. And it's time for our roll call. Mr. Paulson.
Commissioner Bujoir.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson.
Here.
Chair Jensen.
Here.
And Tom O'Donnell and Mariko Seok have an excused absence because they have to recuse themselves from item number three.
And would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on our agenda is approval of our minutes from August 22nd. Have everyone had an opportunity to look at those? Any corrections, questions, or a motion? Commissioner Bujoir.
I'll move approval of the August 22nd minutes as is.
Is there a second? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Written communications, we have one. We have a desk item on item number three, and it is a letter from Danielle Rickman. No, it's a letter from, I'm sorry, Tiffany Bolz, in support of item number three. And Commissioners, have you all had an opportunity to look at that? And if you haven't, let me know when we get to that item, and we'll take a moment, and you can read it. We do not have any requested continuances for tonight. Each of the Planning Commissioners also serves as well as being on the Planning Commission on subcommittees, where we consider different things. Sometimes the general plan, which goes to policies for townwide. Often, we also serve on historic preservation, conceptual development advisory committee. And this is a time when Commissioners report to us on their activities on those subcommittees. So I know that there's one. Was there historic preservation? Commissioner Bujoir.
Thank you, Chair Jensen. Immediately prior to this meeting, we had a General Plan Committee meeting, and we had quite a packed house, which is unusual for the General Plan Committee. We had two items. The first was a proposed subdivision off of Twin Oaks on a currently undeveloped parcel. They're looking for subdivision, which would require a zoning code amendment, a zoning code change, a general plan amendment, as well as potential cancellation of the Williamson Act. Quite a few neighbors came out to discuss this with us, and the committee actually opted to continue it to a date uncertain. There's an EIR in preparation, and we really didn't feel we had enough, given the scope of the project, we didn't feel we had enough information to make a recommendation at that time. So we've continued it until there is a draft EIR. The next meeting will, General Plan Committee meetings are normally not noticed. We will be noticing this next meeting just because of the amount of community interest, and we'll probably be holding it in a larger venue. The second item was a zone change at Royce. And it was for two, a building that is currently zoned for retail. There are two offices that, two spaces that face kind of the backside of a parking lot. It's been really a hard sell for retail, and so we're recommending, and this will come to this body next, but we recommended that they allow the zone change for those two specific units within, not the whole building, but that office and personal service be allowed in those two units. And that was our meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Bujoir. This is a time in our agenda where we ask people who are in the audience, who want to speak to the Commission on an item that is not on our agenda. So you have three minutes to do that tonight. We are considering a cell phone tower at Lark Avenue, the Oak Meadow Park, what do we call it? General plan, I want to call it, master plan, and a proposed tutoring school facility at the upstairs of the former Borders property. So if anyone is in the audience that would like to talk to us about something that is not one of the things I just mentioned, now is the time for you to do that, and you have three minutes. Okay, seeing no one. We are going to consider next two items, and I'll state them more specifically because they are on our consent calendar. And when the, an item goes on our consent calendar, what that means is that the Planning Commission may just consider those and approve them without a public hearing, because it's been determined, based upon laws that may be applied to them, or policies and conditions of the town, that they are not something that's particularly controversial. They can be moved through without a public hearing, and we can vote on them in a single motion. And that is, again, 16615 Lark Avenue, a conditional use permit application U-12-011, which is requesting a modification to an existing telecommunications facility, I'm going to call it a cell tower, at the office building at the corner of Lark and Oka, where you come off the freeway at Lark. The second item is Blossom Hill Road, conditional use permit application U-12-015, which is a master plan for Oak Meadow Park. And with any item on the consent calendar, anyone in the audience, or anyone on the Commission, has the right to pull that item from the consent calendar and consider it in its normal course, and we would have a full public hearing on it. So anyone in the Commission want to pull either items one or two off our consent calendar? Anyone in the audience want to pull items one or two off our consent calendar? Seeing no one, is there a motion on the consent calendar? Commissioner Bujoir.
Thank you. I will move to approve the consent calendar, which includes conditional use permit application U-12-011, and conditional use permit application U-12-015.
Is there a second? Commissioner Talisfor.
Excuse me. I will second that motion. And may I make a comment at this time? I'd like to thank the staff very much, because the proposals, as they were presented to the Planning Commission, really captured what the, what we were seeing as far as cell towers. And we could actually see them in our, in our staff reports. And then when I went to the sites, they were exactly what I saw. So I appreciate the improvement that we've, we've come to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor. So we have a motion to approve our consent calendar by Commissioner Bujoir, seconded by Commissioner Talisfor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes unanimously. And at this time, we're going to move to item number three, but I want to especially commend Commissioner Smith, because she's going to make an announcement.
Yes, I am. I'm going to recuse myself from item number three because of my residence being in such close proximity to the item, and therefore I am recusing myself, and I will not return, assuming that this is the last item on the agenda this evening.
I think it will be. Commissioner Smith, thank you very much for coming to the first part of the meeting. We appreciate it. So even though there's only four of us up here, we do have a quorum. The other three happen to live within 500 feet of item number three, so they cannot by law vote on that application. So you see four of us, and hopefully we'll be okay. Which brings us to item number three, which is conditional use permit application U-12-013, which is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to operate a private school in an upper-floor tenant space on property Zone C to LHPPD. And again, that's the upstairs of the former Borders facility. And as I explained earlier, the way we do this is we call up the applicant first. The applicant has a cumulative total of one speaker, or however many are part of their team, to talk to us. We then invite members of the public up, who have three minutes to talk. And then if the applicant wants to come up again, they have an additional three minutes to say anything they want to say in response to what they've heard. But before we do that, we do, I should ask, because everybody had a chance to see the letter, that's the desk item.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Two letters, I'm sorry. And before we do that, we'll have a brief staff report, if there's one that, to add to any information that we already have.
Staff does not have anything to add to the report.
Okay, and in this circumstance, we've, actually, there have been some questions communicated by email to the staff, and they've been answered prior to the hearing. And I've asked the Commissioners who asked those questions to state them publicly, so that they are part of our public record, and for staff to give responses. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Talisfor, you do that now. Commissioner Erickson? You can also ask questions of the applicant, but I'd like, for our record purposes, for you to state the questions you asked of staff earlier.
So the nature of my questions, for the record, were about the relationship between the current operation of the Fusion Academy Learning Center in Los Gatos, and its relationship to the proposed new location. And the second question, the nature of the second question was about the, about getting evidence of interest and a need from residents of Los Gatos for the proposed school. And the third is a question about the accreditation status of the school.
And staff?
Staff provided the following responses. The current location at 20 South Santa Cruz, also known as Linden Plaza, is a suite that is in the basement. They offer one-on-one tutoring only. It is not a full curriculum. That use is allowed by right. It is my understanding that the applicant intends on vacating that, once the, the proposal location is up and operating, but it is not a requirement. That, again, that use would be allowed by right in that location. As far as support and need for the use, the applicant has submitted two letters, I believe. They have an additional one to offer you this evening, as well as, I believe there are several people in the audience that would like to speak to that as well. And then the applicant will address your third question in regards to accreditation.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Commissioner Talisfor.
Right. The question I asked was, and I'll ask it again, and you can answer it again, and that is, I understand that office uses would be allowed by right on the second floor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so I want to know if school uses require a different CUP now, and in the future? And then, my second question was, or if a CUP is granted for this school, if any other type of school would qualify in the future?
As you know, the CUP runs with the land and is condition-specific. So yes, a future school could go in, as long as they complied with all the conditions of approval.
That are, that would be for this application?
For this application, correct.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Bujoir.
I do have questions.
Ms. Mosley, I have a question about condition of approval six, which is non-teaching events. And I'm going to ask the applicant about maybe a little more specificity of what those are, and what those entail. But I'm just a little concerned about that condition being a little open-ended, given the concern that we have all received about other schools in town possibly not adhering to their CUPs, and the stress it causes on, on adjacent neighbors. And so I'm just wondering if, if you had conversations with the staff, I mean, with the applicant, about what those non-teaching events would entail, and what sort of impact and frequency are we looking at with those?
Staff has discussed that, which is why the condition is included. As far as frequency, I don't believe we have, I have that information for you. The applicant may be able to provide some more direction on that. The condition is worded such that they would not be exceeding the student and staff allowance at those events either. So, for example, if there are 20 parents and five teachers on site for that, and then however many students that is their maximum, they would not be allowed to exceed their maximum allotment for those events.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Was that all?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question about that as well. We're asking it. My question is, how many parking spaces are currently at Old Town? I counted 112, is that correct? According to the plans that I had in front of me?
I'd have to count them.
And the school requires 70 parking places, is that correct? I did count them, but if you wanted to trust me.
The use requires... As the applicant is proposing is 36 spaces, staff modified that so, to 38, so that it would comply with what the office use of that space would require, so that we're keeping consistent requirements. So if this use were to go out, and an office tenant were to occupy the space, that we would consistent, we would have consistent requirements.
Okay, so that brings up another question. There is office space in Old Town currently on the second floor, correct? And the top floor?
Not in this part of Old Town.
Not in this part, but in Old Town at all, there's office space, correct? Office space uses?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call up the applicant. I have two cards for the applicant, and what I generally do is I ask the applicant to come up as a team. Now, one of you may talk, one of you may not talk, but if you both want to position yourselves, so that I can split the time for the five minutes for your presentation, and that's Dana, I'm going to get it wrong, Segal? And Danielle Rickman, if you'd come forward.
Hi. Is this, we need to turn...
Is this on? Yeah.
It's okay.
You can adjust it, you can take it out, and whatever you want to do. So if you're going to use the easel behind you, you might want to pull it out, so that we can hear you. And it would be nice if you could somehow position that easel, so people in the audience can see it as well.
The good news, we're going to have the easel, and also a PowerPoint, which...
I don't know if we can handle that, but okay. It's a school, yeah. Okay.
Multiple learning modalities.
Yeah, that makes it hard for us to see the screen, so... How about if you put your easel, like, even over here, by the table, so, just so that people in the audience can see it as well? Can Commissioners see this now? The easel? Okay.
And how do I start the PowerPoint? That would be great. Thank you. Oh, thanks. Click this one? Okay. Yeah, this works.
And I'm sorry, you are...
I'm Dana Segal.
Okay, hi.
I am with Schlemmer Al Ghazi Associates. We're the architects. We've been working with Fusion for the past three years, and have helped them open about eight or 10 learning facilities throughout California. I want to thank the Commissioners and the staff for all the support we've received so far for the project, and it's great to be here tonight. We've reviewed the staff report, first of all, and all of the findings and conditions are acceptable to Fusion, so I wanted to let you know that. I wanted to take a minute to orient the Commissioners to the architecture and the location, and then I'll hand it over to Danielle Rickman, who's the head of school. She brings her Harvard education to this position, and a lot of warmth, and she'll tell us about the Fusion learning environment. Okay, so you're all familiar with Old Town, and Fusion will be occupying the second floor of the old Borders space. And as we look at the site plan, this next page, which is also shown on the board behind you, you can see that the, this gray area here is the second floor space, that's the proposed learning center. The families will be directed by the staff of Fusion to primarily park in the rear parking space off Mullen Ave, with secondary overflow parking on University Ave. And then, the parents will also be directed to pull into an open parking space, so their students can get out and come to the front door. The entry to Fusion is here on the first floor, where students will be directed up either the stairs, or the elevator, to come to the second floor, which is where the receptionist will reside, right here. And briefly, there's the reception area, there's some quiet learning areas, quiet study areas here, and the rear exit. The restroom facilities are within the space. The, there are 25 rooms that will be tutoring rooms, will one, one student and one tutor. Two of those rooms are music rooms, here and here, so you can see that the walls are thicker, there's an insulation, floor, walls, and ceiling. And then, the administrators' offices are scattered through the space, some very close to the entry. There's an administrator off of each of the quiet learning areas, here and here, and then the rest is bordered by the administrator, excuse me, the tutor offices. And any questions about the orientation, or the architecture? Okay. Dani, can you tell us about the program?
Let me make sure that I push the right button, which direction? All right, I made it work. Hi, I'm Dani Rickman, and I'm the head of school for Fusion Academy Los Gatos. And I just wanted to give you just briefly, a quick overview of what our program is. And we're a fully accredited school and tutoring facility that serves students in sixth through 12th grade, with a primary focus on high school students. We are college prep, and what makes us different is that we are providing all of our academic services one-to-one, so like Dana had mentioned, one teacher and one student in every classroom. We also have a full music and art enrichment program, and for, we value not only the academic growth of our students, but also the social-emotional growth, so we do partner with professionals in the community to make sure that our students and families are getting the support that they need. I wanted to just give you a brief glimpse into our Bay Area, our other Bay Area Fusion Academies, and you can see an example of an entryway here with our custom-made surfboard for all of the Fusion schools. Also, this is an example of a student doing some of their independent work in the quiet reading area, and a little glimpse into what our recording studios look like. And I love these pictures, because you get a chance to kind of get a feel for what the one-to-one education looks like, where, oh, where students get to have relationship-based learning, and there's a lot of creativity that goes into that, and also individualization and customization of their learning.
So Ms. Rickman, that yellow light means you have 30 seconds, but I'm going to be generous, as long as you go through quickly.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say pencils down.
Okay. I also just wanted you to see what professionals have to say about our program, and that there really is a need for our program in this community. And why one-to-one? Because it works, flexible scheduling for students, individualized instruction, that it's relationship-based learning and mastery-learning approach, so that students are not left behind their, the education isn't moving on prior to them actually gaining mastery of that. And why in Los Gatos? And there are a number of reasons. One, we're providing support for students that are in, to help keep them in their local schools, and support them in finding success there. And then for the students that aren't a fit in the traditional setting, we can also provide a full school experience. And then, there are a number of families that I'm speaking with right now, that are actually traveling 45 minutes or more to get to find an alternative setting that's appropriate for their students, so this would provide an alternative in their hometown. And lastly, I just wanted to point out, too, that it's, it will attract families and staff who may live, and eat, and work, and play in Los Gatos, and I have a lot of families say that they would love to have a school in Los Gatos, because it's their favorite place to shop and spend time, so. And that is it. Thank you. Thank you very much for letting us have the time.
Let's see if there's questions for you. I'm sure there are. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Rickman? Commissioner Talisfor.
Can I ask the architect a question first? Okay, thank you. Yes, you mentioned a drop-off point for students?
Yeah, actually, the, the parents will be directed not to drop off, but to pull into an open parking space, and then their students will be able to get out. So just as if they were going to a store, or going to an office.
Okay, so who would be monitoring that?
The staff of the school. There's a contract when they, when they start the school, and that discussion will be part of the intake process.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for either? Commissioner Bujoir.
Thank you. This is also for Ms. Segal, is it?
Segal, thank you.
Segal? Sorry. Could you flip back to the floor plan slide? And I have a question about the first floor entry, because I didn't see that on our, on our plans. So we don't know right now what the use is of the floor beneath you, right? So is that going to be a shared entryway? And how is that going to be divided off?
I flipped one more slide, just to be able to... I'm flipped one more slide just to be able to answer your question. Right now, the landlords are, are in process of building this demising wall between the old large space to cordon off this little area here, which is what you saw in the next plan. We can look at it again, too. There's a pair of double doors that are going to be installed right here, and they are also building the stair, not part of Fusion, but just part of the landlord's work, and I believe that's all permitted.
So it'll be a completely separate entryway from the other downstairs unit?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. In many of the other Fusion academies throughout the state, there are separate entries. They're often in mixed-use and office environments because it's very much like a business model with the individual offices. So, but there's often a ground floor entry specifically for the, for the students that separate, that it sort of keeps everybody happier.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern about a possible dual entry, so thank you for clarifying.
Commissioner Talisfer, before I go back to you, let me see if there's any other questions. Okay.
I did have a follow-up to the issue of the parking and drop-off, I guess it would, and I'm not sure who would answer it, but in your, your letter of proposal or letter of addressing us, introduction to Fusion, on page four, that would be in exhibit four, page four, you have the level of grade of students, you have sixth through 12, but the majority of students seem to be 10th through 12. Is that correct? And so I, that's about 53%. Is that, is that a typical year for you, that most of your students are at that level?
Yes, and, and when you look at the majority of our Fusion campuses, the majority of them have many more high school students than they do middle school students.
So with that in mind, for me, they, these students drive to school?
Some of them do. Some students walk and ride their bikes because many of them are local.
Okay, is that, well.
But yes, some, some do drive, yes.
Okay, and then can you, can I go ask one more question about this? Clarification. You do tutoring and mentoring, and you call this a school, so I'm confused.
Sure.
So can you take me through this typical day of a student in your school, and what that's, you know, just take me through that day?
Yeah, students can access our program on a few different levels. So there's the tutoring and mentoring piece where they do come for support to support their academic work while they're in their school, their local school. And so some students just come in the afternoons for that. Then we also have students that can come to us for credit recovery. They may come to us just for one class, or for a class that's particularly difficult to help support their time in their school. And then we also, for students who really do need a full alternative, can provide a full school day where students are coming to us, they're going to different teachers, still all one-to-one, so it feels like that tutoring mentoring. So they go to different classes for their, different actual rooms for their different courses, and then they do their independent work in our quiet reading area.
And so that's usually, what, eight, eight o'clock to, what is it, eight to one?
Part of the flexibility of our schedule actually makes it so that students are coming at different times during the day, so.
I mean, a student that would be enrolled for the entire, his entire curriculum?
Right. They may start at different times, though. Sometimes students start at 10:30 and sometimes.
Okay, but it's usually that period.
About six hours.
Six hours, okay.
I'm sorry, did I answer the question correctly?
I think you did. I did have another one, but I've forgotten what it is. I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Ms. Rickman, let me follow up just on what you were just saying, because that was my question. What's the pattern in your other schools? Do you mean, do you have more tutoring students who come for an hour, you know, to do a class? Are your arrivals and departures staggered throughout the day? How, how many people tend to arrive in the morning and leave at a certain time, or do they just come and, I'm just trying to figure out what the pattern would be?
It really is staggered throughout the day. It's part of what we offer with individualization with schedules, so sometimes students, yeah, some students really do well very early in the morning and come at 7:30 in the morning and start classes at that time, and some students don't start until 11:30, some don't even start until the afternoon. So it really is staggered throughout the day.
Commissioner Erickson.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for making the proposal. I have a couple of questions for you. One of the findings that we are required to make to approve the conditional use permit is, and I'll paraphrase a little bit, that the proposed use of the property is essential to the public convenience or welfare. Primarily, at least, I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, but primarily that would be for the public convenience and welfare of the residents of the town of Los Gatos. So, a question, what empirical evidence do you have as opposed to anecdotal evidence that there's a need for the type of instruction, and I fully understand the nature of what you're doing, and have you, and gathering the evidence to determine whether there's a need in this area, had interactions with any representatives of the high school district and the unions, the Los Gatos Union School District, and the Union School District, which is, all of which are in the town of Los Gatos and the Loma Prieta District, because all of those have students in the lower range of the ones, to, to see if you can provide assistance to those school districts for meeting some needs that they may not be in a position to meet?
Sure, and to start at the latter part of your question, we have definitely spoken with Los Gatos High School and also some of the middle schools, with the counselors and with the administration at those schools, and have been able to provide some support with tutoring. But we don't have, I, I'm not sure, I want to make sure I understand your question completely, but we don't have a formal, a formal agreement as far as filling a need that they may have on their campuses, but we absolutely have taken students and supported them in a tutoring, in a tutoring environment from those schools. Does that answer that part of your question? I'm not, I'm not sure. I want to make sure I understand it.
Well, let me be more.
Sure.
More explicit about it.
Okay.
For example, have you had conversations with the superintendent of the elementary school district, with the superintendent of the high school district, to see, are there needs which they have, as two examples, are there needs which are not, which they're challenging to be in a position to meet, that this might provide an alternative for the residents, the students who would otherwise be in their district?
I have not had a conversation like that, no.
So, okay, so that's fine. So, so then, if you go back, pardon me, the first part of my question, other than anecdotal evidence, which is what the letters, when I'm not
Sure.
underrepresenting the importance of what you might be doing for the people who are represented in those two letters, but do you have empirical evidence about the need as opposed to anecdotal evidence that relates to this town?
I mean, I, I can speak to the professionals that we've met with. I mean, we are new to this, to the area, and I have spoken with many professionals in the area that also feel that we're filling a need, but as far as empirical evidence, I'm not sure. We do have a waiting list, yes. We do have a waiting list for, for the program also, so there is quite a bit of interest besides just the families that have been happy with the idea of Fusion being here. There are families that are ready to sign up and waiting for the new space.
But presum, wait, follow up. But presumably, the waiting list is for your present services, which do not involve offering classes and a high school diploma?
Well, the waiting list actually is for hopefully being in a space where we are able to be able to provide those things.
Do you have some sense of what proportion of that waiting list are residents of Los Gatos as opposed to residents of some other place?
You know, I, I know that there are a number of them that are, are residents of Los Gatos, but I don't have that information with me right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Another subject, if that's okay?
Okay.
So in your, both your presentation tonight and your, the materials which you provided, you refer to yourself as a fully accredited for-profit school. Presumably, the accreditation status is with the Accrediting Commission of Schools of the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so follow-up question. Then, when they've granted you that accreditation status, have they granted it to Fusion Learning Academies and Learning Centers, and then you operate at several locations in the state that?
So, so let me be.
Are they granting it on a school-by-school basis?
It's a school-by-school basis, and let me clarify that Los Gatos has not been accredited yet. We do have a letter from WASC that does say, that's, they, and they talk about their support for our program and that they will, they do intend to accredit us. We do have actually two schools already in Northern California that are accredited, and are, all of our Southern California schools are already WASC accredited as well.
Kind of follow up on that.
Yes.
According to their website, there are three that were accredited, at least that use the name Fusion in their title, and they're in Los Angeles, Solano Beach, and Mission Viejo, and don't unless, and don't include even the San Diego one, so it could be that their website is not updated, but.
It must be. Some of the accreditations are more recent, but are all of our Southern California, oh, the new school has not been accredited yet, the new San Diego one, or? Yeah, may I?
Well, yes, you can. You have to come up and introduce yourself and speak directly to the question, and only to the accreditation question. Thanks.
And my name is Jeff Poole. I'm with American Education Group, which is the partner organization with Fusion Academy. And regarding accreditation, and I handle all the accreditation, all of the schools are WASC accredited with the exception of Fusion Walnut Creek and Fusion Los Gatos, which were just, are, are open, and you cannot get accreditation until you're open. And if I could, we, Dr. Brown, who's the executive director of WASC, had sent us a letter and said, and I'll just read a couple of quick experts, or excerpts, but Fusion schools provide an extremely high quality of individualized services to the students enrolled in their educational programs. WASC has witnessed firsthand the quality of staff, organizational structure, curriculum, and most importantly, personnel and academic growth in the students served at Fusion schools. If those considering enrolling students at either the Los Gatos or Walnut Creek sites wish to contact WASC directly regarding the school's accreditation status, will be more than pleased to provide the specific information regarding the unusually high quality of services provided. And he leads with that letter saying that, given the extremely high quality of work and the product WASC has observed at other Fusion schools in California, it is clearly anticipated that full accreditation status will be granted to both of these schools once the initial visits are included.
Commissioner Erickson, does that answer your question?
I have a follow-up, one follow-up question.
Okay, you get one.
Okay. The, no, thank you for the information. It's just, and just so you understand where I'm coming from, as you would know, as well as I would know, given what I do for a living, the, the public's assurance that the quality of a degree that they're receiving is, in this country, done through an independent accreditation process and so forth, not as it's done in a lot of European countries, as a, as an act of the state, if you would. So to, for us to have assurance that you would have accreditation status is a, is I would think a fiduciary responsibility that we have on, on behalf of the, of the citizens. So we, because of state law, we cannot, there's no state law, as I understand, that would allow us to require as a condition of the, of the CUP that you be accredited, but I have a question for you to, to ask of you, and, and you can either respond to it now or you can respond to it when you come back after the, part of the public hearing. Would you be willing to offer that as a condition of your approval?
First, and I'll answer it in two parts. One, going back to the accreditation status and on the website, and I can share with you the accreditation status of all the other schools. I just wanted to clarify that. I'm, seen it on their website, so I don't know why. Regarding a, what I would ask is, I have no doubt that WASC will give us accreditation, and they have at other schools, and suggested by this letter. I would, I would only like to give that some thought, if I might, simply because there are, and we haven't, all of our schools have gotten through their WASC accreditation visits on the first round and received three-year accreditation. So I can't imagine for the life of me why that would never happen. I just want to, if you wouldn't mind, be cautious, and, because what, what I would be, what I might ask back, if we had some time to think about that, is if you go through your first round WASC visit, many schools do not get accredited initially. It's not uncommon. So I, I wanted to think about, well, if we didn't get accredited initially, WASC typically comes back and says, will you do these next, you're familiar with the next few things, and the answer is yes. So I wouldn't want to close the school down because we're working with WASC towards accreditation.
Commissioner Erickson, does that answer your question? Actually, I have a follow-up on that. What's the typical timeframe for, to receive accreditation?
Great question. Typically, it is 12 months you have to be open, but WASC has accredited all our schools within the first six months.
Then you might want to consider whether you'd be comfortable with a condition requiring you to come back for a review of your conditional use permit in six months to evaluate how you're performing on the conditions and whether or not, in fact, you're accredited. Okay. Commissioner Erickson.
I would offer an observation to the chair. You can be a candidate for accreditation without being accredited, and that's the status when he was describing, if they go through the process and don't get fully accredited, but have some requirements from WASC, they would be a candidate, from my perspective and my experience. If, if in fact they were to offer that as a condition of approval, if they had candidate status, that would, that would be, because WASC won't give them candidate status if they're going to turn them down. It doesn't guarantee you're going to get it.
I am not sure if candidate status comes with the initial, we, we are submitting, in fact, right now, WASC initial site visit applications, and I apologize, I don't know when that candidate status comes in. And, and again, I, I only want to, we'll make a significant investment in this facility, obviously, and I would have to be cautious in saying we're willing to, for some strange reason that I can't imagine, that WASC says, well, we're going to table it, or what have you, that we risk that significant investment because of something, again, that I can't foresee. So, I, now, I'm, you know, I just want to give this some thought, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Other questions? Commissioner, tell us where. And who are they for?
They're for.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Sir, could you please, because you spoke to us, fill out one of these cards, just so we have your name on our record?
There are two questions, and I think that, Dana?
I'm Danielle, Dani.
Danielle, Dani, okay. My, I have a quick one, and then I have a more of a philosophical one, but how many teachers will be present during your hours of operation? I'm understanding from the staff report that there would be 25 teachers on site every day.
Right, but I mentioned before that the, the classes are staggered throughout the days, throughout the day, depending on the student's schedule, so the likelihood that 25 teachers would all be there at the same time is, is very rare.
Okay, so typical day. If you, if, you said you have a waiting list? So tell me how many teachers do you, if, if this were to come to fruition and this application was approved tonight, tell me how many teachers would be with your waiting list and what you've, the business you've generated so far? What would that be?
It would probably be around 15 teachers.
15 teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then my other question for you is, why this space?
Why the space?
Why the space at Old Town?
Well, first of all, when we're looking for space for students, we're looking for, because we are an unconventional space, we're often looking for space where students have access to amenities to be able to go have lunch in, in the area, and also where they will feel part of the community. A lot of our students, there are many other students that do come into Los Gatos, I know, and from the local high school, and so that they don't stand out, they feel part of the community as well. So Los Gatos has really been an ideal space. I don't know if someone wants to speak a little bit more to the space issue?
Only that, I don't have details to answer your question either, except that I know from working on several projects with Fusion, is that they do a long vetting process to find the right space in the right town. So there's a combination of finding a space that's the correct size. that's the correct size, that has the correct location, that feels, like Dani said, part of the community, has the right business model that works, has a landlord that is amenable to having students come in and having that as part of their, of their real estate program. So there's a lot of different factors. And before they, before they finally agree on a space, and we generally, we might do five or six fit plans as architects, we might try to sort of fit their program into several different buildings to figure out which one is going to work best for them. And in this case, because it was a shell, was it sort of an open space, it was upstairs, there were windows available for most, all of the tutoring spaces that you see here, with the, with very few exceptions. The music rooms, you don't want any windows in, but everybody knows that natural light breeds a great learning environment. And so there are very few, just a couple of offices, which the administrators get, sorry, they get less light, but, but it really makes for a great learning environment. And also the, the flow of the space, being able to have the quiet learning area surrounded by the offices, by the tutoring offices leans itself to a great learning environment as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Bushwell?
Thank you. I think this is probably going to be for Danielle, but I want to go back to this non-teaching event issue that I raised earlier. What do you envision? So if I understand correctly, and please keep in mind that a lot of this isn't personal. This is, we are passing something that is going to stay with the property. And so this, we need to make sure all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, and that we're not allowing a use that, when you leave, someone else could come in and do something radically different that will impact the neighbors. So you say there may only be 25 teachers at a time, maximum, but you're permitted up to 32 with administrators, and then up to 40 students. So there could be 72 people allowed by our conditions of approval at one time. And so you're saying you're going to have these non-teaching events. I want to know what that is. But then you're also not supposed to exceed that 72 number. And so I'm wondering how you are possibly going to do that, depending on what the events are. So.
Okay. We were, we had many conversations with staff about this, so I'm going to, I'm going to respectfully take, I'll take a try at it. We'll talk, and if you need further information, Dani can chime in. But we were talking a lot with Jeff and the head of, the head of Fusion as well. So as you say, you've got, you've got 25 classrooms. So in a, in a, at the busiest time of day, let's say that's 11 o'clock, maybe it's 11 o'clock, on, in the busiest time of day after Fusion's been open for three years here, and there's, there's great, you know, huge, long waiting list in a full, full capacity. I've got, I have one teacher in each of the 25 classrooms. I've got four administrator offices. So, excuse me, so I've got one, two, three, four. They're full. I've got my fifth administrator as my receptionist. So that's all filled. And then the students, because each of those tutor offices are filled, that means they're filled with one student and one tutor, right? So that's the 25 students and the 25 teachers. And then there also might be 15 students who are in between classes. So those students might be, some of them might be in this quiet reading area, either sitting at the table, doing their homework, sitting on the chairs or couches, doing their homework, and some of them might be back here. So that's a typical, a typical full house, if you will. When, so that's, that's sort of maximum capacity during the day. There's also the other events that might happen. There's parent open houses that occur three or four times a year, and that's, that happens through outreach in the community, ads in the paper, radios, the local blogs, whatever. That will bring parents in. And at that, at those times, which are generally after-school hours or at the very end of the day, right? Because most, most people, just, you know, most of us, right, work best sort of during those, those daily working hours. There are some kids who work in really well early in the morning, some kids who are working really well later in the day, but most people. So when, when you're at the sort of 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock hour, there might be a dozen parents coming in who are interested in coming to Fusion, or interested or curious about what it would be like for their kid. And there might be Dani and one or two other teachers speaking about the program. There might, there might be a student coming in to show their work or something like that. So that's one kind of event that happens regularly. Another one is when they, hopefully, when the CUP's approved, the buildings, the plans are approved and it's built, there's going to be an open house. So that's a one-time event, right? Like, hey, we got our, we got our CUP, we're opening. There may be a conversation, there may be a special use permit required for that if they want to exceed the number of people that are written, which I think is why the staff wrote the report, you know, with the numbers that they did. And then other events, when the teachers are, teacher trainings happen. So either the teachers will come in and there'll be a special facilitator brought in to teach them about, we're talking about different ways of handling issues that come up for students, to help them through difficult events in their lives, you know, some kind of counseling events, kind of the mentoring or how to mentor, or they might be teaching a new, all of the, you know, the Walnut, the Walnut Creek and the San Mateo teachers might come in and have some great lesson about math from a math mentor. That kind of, that kind of event will happen. And again, that might happen on a Saturday, it might happen in, in the later evening hours. The, the commitment by Fusion is that they will stick to those numbers, and we know that the city will, that's, that's Jeff's commitment and Dani's commitment to you. That's where those numbers are. So it won't be like 25 kids, 25 teachers, five administrators, and 15, you know, special event people coming in, because the space, the space couldn't handle it. It wouldn't be a good learning environment. Did that answer your question?
So if I could, yes, it could, I have a couple of follow-ups. One, how are you going to, and do you have a plan in place to control the number, or is there going to be a monitor? Or, I, this is, I mean, this is in the middle of our downtown. It's right adjacent to residential areas. Parking's a big deal in downtown. I could see a special event. You know, now that you've outlined a little more, I personally would be more comfortable with a little more explicit guidance on the frequency, because you mentioned open house, maybe three to five per year. I mean, yeah, then like a bigger open house, like once or twice a year, like a, like a bigger event, and then teacher training?
No, the bigger, the bigger events, just, just the grand opening.
Just the one.
Yeah, they're just the grand opening, but there's no, there's no intention, and it's not, it's not part of the culture at any other school to hold large events.
Okay.
It's just small, small events.
And the frequency of the teacher trainings are monthly? Yeah, maybe you can come, I mean, you're going to have a chance to come back, so maybe if you want to come back with an answer on that, that's fine, but...
They, I'm just, I'm just reading again the, the conditions here, but it doesn't answer exactly your question. The use may include non-teaching events such as facility tours, parent nights, art shows, and staff teacher training. Training shall be limited to the staff of the school only, and all events will not exceed the allowed hours or the maximum student and staff allowances. When parents or guests are present for these events, they shall be counted as staff. So I think the, the sort of limitation that that puts on it is really, we're going to operate within the, only the hours that are, that are listed as between 7:30 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., and with only the maximum number of teachers, teacher, staff, and students of 32 and 40.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is more of the issue of frequency. I mean, is this a weekly event, or are you going to have something every week, twice a week, twice a year? I mean, that's the sort of thing that I may want to see if we can put some parameters around.
Okay.
So that it's not an unlimited, where you're, you're going to have an art show every weekend, and...
Yeah. Jeff will be able to speak to that about what, what is typical in the other, the other Fusion Learning Academies.
Hey, why don't you keep some of these questions in mind, and we'll let members of the public talk, because you guys have been up for a while, and you can think about how you want to respond to some of the questions that you've heard. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll ask members of the public to come forward, and you have three minutes, and there may be questions of you as well. Chris and Triva Johnsgard?
Hi, how are you tonight? My name's Chris Johnsgard. This is my wife, Triva. We live on Indian Rockway in Los Gatos. Born and raised in the area, graduated from Los Gatos High, graduated from San Jose State University. We bought our, our existing home that we live in today in 1995 in Los Gatos. As parents, my, our intent here today is to hopefully endorse the, the strong need for this type of learning experience for a child. We have two kids, and for those of you on the board here that have more than one child, you realize that out of the same, same, same mix, they can be completely different, different personalities and have, and have different needs. Our oldest boy's 23. He went, graduated from Los Gatos High, went through the standard school programs, Fisher Middle School, average student. You know, we tried our hardest to get the grades up and help him and push him, and, you know, he was just kind of a cruiser, cruiser guy. Now, we have this young man, Colton, who's 14, who wanted to speak, but apparently it wasn't appropriate. But he's an exceptionally young man. From sixth grade, when he started doing, started testing on the state level, he was reading at a, reading and comprehension at a graduate, graduating high school senior level. He's way above average on, in every subject area on his state testing. But when he got to this middle school scene with multiple teachers and multiple classes, the way his brain works, it's a very difficult timestamp on task, getting his homework turned in, and essentially, between the three of us with insane home environment at night, trying to get homework done, barely past seventh grade, and we actually pulled him out of eighth grade three weeks before graduation. And we've been, you know, we've been through counselors and, you know, counselors and teachers and psychiatric evaluations, and the ADD and the ADHD, none of it fit. What he needs is, and what we found with Fusion, is this one-on-one, you know, keep, keep, keep me on focus and let, let my amazing brain absorb and not get distracted by the, the traditional public-type setting and public metrics has been a tremendous experience for us and for him. And we believe that this type of opportunity and in Los Gatos is, is for us, we frankly, we're spending our summer figuring out what we were going to do with this brilliant mind, other than public schools. So I'm going to beat the clock here with 20 seconds, and why don't you'll read one of my letters, has a little more detail, but thank you for your time.
Sir, thank you. We'll give you, it's perfectly appropriate for your son to speak if he wants to. So if he wants to fill out a card and, and talk to us, that's fine.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Colton Johnsgard. I am the second-born son to Chris and Triva Johnsgard, and I'm extremely proud to be. They're great parents, and I love them for allowing me to do this. Public school is like trying to fit a square in a circle. I just didn't fit. You know, I couldn't stay focused, had a really hard time with it. And I found that Fusion is perfect. I love everyone there. The one-on-one experience helps me so much. And it just, it, it conforms to me perfectly. All the teachers are so great and so nice, and they, they teach it to you the way you need to be taught it. And I find that in a shorter amount of time, I understand more schoolwork and subjects. And Dani Rickman is a fantastic director. She's one of the nicest ladies I've ever met, very organized, very, just incredible. All the people there, they teach so well, and I just can't ask for any more academically. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming down this evening. Thank you very much. Siobhan Fitzgerald?
Hi, good evening. My name is Siobhan Fitzgerald, and I live at Creekside Village at University and Highway Nine in Los Gatos. I've moved from, into California six and a half years ago and came straight to Los Gatos. My husband and I came from, originally from Canada to Seattle, Washington, to here. So I've only been here six and a half years, but we love it in Los Gatos. And one of the reasons why I think Fusion needs to be here is, as this young man was speaking, sorry, I also have a daughter that does not fit into the system. It's been very hard. And we live very close to town, and one of the things we do is we walk. And I know parking is a really big problem in Los Gatos, and certain events like Jazz on the Plaz and Thursday, Thursday nights and Fridays are very busy, driving into Los Gatos. So I like the fact that Fusion is very close by, so we can walk. Also, it encourages the children to ride their bikes and scooter. So that also helps with the traffic and the parking issue in Los Gatos. Also, Fusion, they really don't have regular classes on Fridays, so the traffic flow and the parking issues in Los Gatos on Friday would, Fusion really wouldn't impact them, even though Fridays are really busy here in Los Gatos. Fusion doesn't have a full class load on that day. I have tried to use other tutoring services in the community, and I wasn't very impressed. We use the Tutoring Club, which is attached to the high school area there, and they really didn't meet the needs of my eight-and-a-half-year-old and my 12-year-old. And I had to look in Cupertino. It's a very far drive. I had to go to Math Museum in Campbell. So that's taking business out of Los Gatos, because when I'm in those other areas, I'm more likely to go shopping, or I'm more likely to go grab dinner. Like, tonight, we had Fusion, and we went straight to Main Street Burger afterwards, because it was for a soccer sponsorship event, and we made sure we ate in town right after we went to Fusion. So by having Fusion Academy in town, just automatically, the natural progression is to then support businesses and community events within our community, and that's the stuff that makes Los Gatos great. And that's why, six and a half years ago, we moved here, even though it was the height of the housing boom, and it was very expensive to move here. This is where we chose to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald. Tiffany Bolts?
I hate doing this, so bear with me. My name is Tiffany Bolts. I live at 148 New York Avenue, so I live right by the high school. My daughter is one of the few, I think, represented here that is a full-time student at Fusion. So she is 17. She's finishing, this is her senior year. She went all the way through her whole education in the Los Gatos Public Schools, was not having success in high school at all, was falling through the cracks, which it's, it's easier, easier to do in a large school like that, where there's a lot of students. Guidance counselors are juggling a huge load. And if you just aren't really set up to succeed in a, in a typical classroom setting, it's very challenging. So taking her out of those schools was difficult, but she is happier than she's ever been. Sorry. She's actually, probably, really actually going to be able to go to college at this point, which she was, probably not even going to graduate from Los Gatos. So a school in the community of this nature, where she didn't actually have to leave the community, her friends, everything is still right here, she can still go to school right here, but the kind of school that fits her, instead of where she just was not thriving in any way. My son is 12, and he's at Fisher, and he's doing great. So I have one, you know, in public schools still, and one that just needed something different. I might be able to answer the questions you had about the, the full-time student thing. I don't know if later you have questions about that, but she is one of the students that goes all day. So her days are staggered. You know, Mondays and Wednesdays, she goes later and stays later. Tuesdays and Thursdays are earlier to earlier. And that's just kind of in keeping with the space. You know, they're so cramped right now, and they really do need a bigger space to accommodate everyone. And I know the waiting list is long, and I think that speaks to the empirical evidence that you're looking for as to whether there is a need for this, in this community. I'm sure the waiting list would probably show you that there is a need. So I think that with what they have right now, the days are very staggered, just in order to fit everyone in with the right teacher at the right time and the right... order to fit everyone in with the right teacher at the right time in the right classroom. I can wrap it up.
That means you have 30 seconds.
Okay, I don't need 30 more seconds. Anyway, I'm just really glad the school is here and that we have a different alternative in this town, so thank you.
Let me see if there's questions about your full-time student.
Sure.
Nope, thank you. And we have your letter. Maria Risto.
Hi, I'm Maria Risto. I live at 85 Broadway, so I actually live around the corner from the existing Fusion facility. And, oh my gosh, you brought up so many things, so I could address a lot, but I'll try to. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. First of all, I did not know Fusion was around the corner from me when they moved in, so because of the fact that I didn't even notice it, I would say I didn't see the impact on it above and beyond what the regular downtown impact is to our street. My son, it's emotional to talk about your children, but my son, I have two children, and he is brilliant. He creates things. We have a roller coaster he built in our backyard. He loves a project. He has a very hard time in a school where you go to one class, and then you move to another class, and then you go to another class, and then you go home and you have homework, and you've got to restart and restart and restart. So probably the ideal for him would be to take one class to completion and then do another class. So, long story short, he was a freshman at Los Gatos High School last year. He finished some of his classes with As and other classes with Ds and Fs. I've talked to a lot of people at the high school, and the problem is, summer school at Los Gatos High School in Saratoga are only offered for remediation. So first of all, if you want to take an extra class in the summer, you can't unless you get a D or an F. Well, we had plenty of choices, because he had a few of those, but they only offer one class at a time for three weeks long, from 8 until 12, and that's it. And then the next three weeks, you can take the next class. So you could only take two semesters in a summer, and when you retake those, then those grades replace your other grades. So we had been struggling and trying to figure out what to do, and I'd heard about Fusion. I'd read about it. It was in San Mateo. I'm thinking, this is a no-starter. I can't do that kind of drive. And then I saw another article that they were coming to Los Gatos. I eventually found them in the spring, and my son took one class in summer school there, and after a few days, he said, can I leave Los Gatos? Can I just go to Fusion full-time? Well, for a variety of reasons, we're not going to do that right now, and I'm working with the high school to see if he can take more classes that are not just for remediation, but that would fit better, where, for example, in world history, instead of sitting in a class with a whole bunch of people, he's talking one-on-one with somebody, and he's not quite engaged there, so let's find another way to engage him. A teacher cannot do that with 28 kids in the class, but at Fusion, they can. Oh my gosh, I had too many things. But I just think this is really an unmet need. I know so many parents that are trying to address this and can't. The only option the high school offers is an online class, and I'm sorry, but the last thing in the world I want my 15-year-old to do is spend time on a computer in learning. I want him face-to-face with a person. I want him around other students when he's working on his homework, and Fusion gives him that whole contained adaptive way.
Questions for Ms. Risto. Thank you. Sue Farwell.
Sue Farwell, Edelen Avenue. From what I've heard about Fusion, it sounds like it's a fantastic school. I'm going to speak as a neighborhood concern, and for us, on this surrounding streets, parking is not an issue, because there is permit parking. I'm going to speak to the sheer volume of a school that's going to have 40 students and potentially, you know, only 25 teachers but five administrators. You're looking at, you know, you're looking at 70, and I don't know what the floor area ratio is allowed for offices, if it's the same amount, if they're at the same capacity. I think Fusion's a great idea. I think it's a good fit. My concern is, again, the sheer volume of students and teachers combined and hours. They're long hours. They go from 7:00, I'm hearing, until 9:00 o'clock. So for the parking, you know, downtown Los Gatos parking is tough. It's going to be a hard time, but kids, they're high school kids, they're going to figure it out. My concern is the volume of the streets, the volume on the neighborhood streets of kids leaving school. It sounds like it's a great school, but they're still high school kids, and if they're leaving school at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 at night, it's just concerned about the impact on the area. I know that Fusion is here looking for an approval. Nobody likes to go back to the drawing board. I guess my concern or my question would be, is the 70, is a need for 40 students driven out of a profit margin? Is there a way that they could limit the amount of students that are full-time, which are going to be in and out and hanging around the area? Limit that to, say, you know, 25 with the 25 classrooms, and then you limit your tutoring to 25? Do we need to have the 40 full capacity plus 25 plus five administrators? Just seems like a lot of people, and I'm just wondering if there's a way for Fusion to work it so it's not quite a large number to impact everything that goes along with it, the infrastructure, the parking, the noise, traffic in general, I guess, so.
Questions for Ms. Farwell. Thank you. That's all the cards I have, so if there's somebody else that wants to talk on this item before I call back the applicants, now's the time to do that? Okay, so I'm going to call back the applicants, and you can all three come up or one of you. You have three minutes to address those questions that you've heard or concerns that have been raised.
Really quickly, I'll just address the issue that was just brought up about quantities. The previous use that's in the Fusion letter that all the commissioners have, but the speaker doesn't, probably doesn't. The previous use of retail was that store, when Borders was there, was 124 occupants, 74.19 square feet divided by 60 is 124 occupants. A business use is 100 occupants per square foot of 74.19, so that's 75 occupants. And as we said, where Fusion is anticipating 70 occupants, so it's actually lessening the load that was on the space ahead of previous use.
Okay, you have three minutes, so is anything else you want to say now, or let me ask for -- I can ask for questions?
Just a follow-up on the accreditation, and that is that certainly, I'll state again, our plan is to get accreditation. We're not required to get accreditation, but we definitely do. We've done that at all the schools, and we would be willing to come back and demonstrate the progress we're making towards that accreditation, absolutely. I'm not sure if that helps or not, but certainly we would do that, because we, again, per the letter that I read, WASC is preparing for the fall site visit. They know we're going to have one.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Bujol.
Two questions. One, just a point of clarification, you know, what you just described about the number of occupants, and it's clearly in your letter, you had said 70, but the condition of approval on the staff report has 72. I'm just wondering if which one it is, if there's a reason for one or the other. And secondly, if you've had time to think about the typical number of non-teaching events that you would have in a given year or month?
So non-teaching events, there are just so few of them. So if we could provide, and as an example, have an open house for parents that are interested, and there'll be typically five, we can do those twice a month, once a month, if those aren't hard to limit. And that is really the only group event we typically have that would ever, and those don't exceed the numbers that we've laid out, because, again, typically for Fusion, that meeting will be five to maybe 10 families that come. We don't have huge enrollment events. The enrollment process is individualized, just like the education is. So if, we certainly would be willing to limit those open houses to, again, twice a month would be an easy number. In terms of teacher training, we don't have mass teacher training, and that would, those numbers would never exceed the numbers. In fact, when we open a new school, all the teachers go down to the Solana Beach, California, near San Diego school, to get their training. They spend a week there in a boot camp, if you will, and that's where they're training. So they all go down for that for a week.
So if we added a condition of approval to item six, saying that these non-teaching events were not to exceed two per month, that would be acceptable?
Yeah, let me see. Parents' night, art shows, staff teacher training. Yeah, and I guess as I read, what I'm looking at is everything that entails. So facility tours, again, those happen one-on-one, so let me make sure I'm clarifying what I'm agreeing to, that if three parents came in and wanted a facility tour, is that a non-teaching event? And if it is, and then we have a group of parents come at night, I would say maybe it's once a week, but it never exceeds the number. They're just always small, small groups. So another way to do it is, any event that might exceed, you know, X number of people twice a month is more than fine.
Okay, well, that actually helps me, because that's what I was trying to get at in my earlier question, like, what is a non-teaching event? And you described them, but the fact that a tour could be two parents coming in to see the site.
Yeah, right.
That's different from having, like, an open house tour of everyone on the waiting list can come in and see it.
Right, and that just, yeah, and those certainly, we don't have those, and again, an open house will be, we will have them, and they'll be five to 10 families.
Okay, now I'm understanding a little better, so thank you.
Commissioner Taussford.
Yeah, a follow-up to that. Do you ever have speaker events for your parents?
We will, and they'd be during, yeah, we have had those, and they're, again, I would say, I've been to a few, and you'll have maybe 20 parents there.
Okay, well, that's not included here. You know, schools, usually, you come up with things as, you know, as they
Right, I understand, yeah.
start expanding their whatever.
Right.
And so it's typical school, and that's a good thing about them. So that would, I don't know how we would account for that in that non-teaching event.
Yeah, and that would be parent nights.
But I have a question for that.
So it might be, you know, we limit, again, just trying to help, limit the parent nights, art shows, and other, how would we say it, or those type of events, again, to two a month or something like that. I don't have a problem doing that, because our events are so small. And that's a hard thing with Fusion. It's a very small program, and you just don't have big groups of people.
Well, it's small now. You said you had 15 on the waiting list?
Oh, you mean students?
Students on the waiting list?
Right, yeah, but I mean, in terms of total number of parents, families remain small.
Well, let me follow up with
At full capacity, it's small. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so I have some other questions. Is now the time to do that?
Let me just, I want to follow up on the non-teaching event. I have two kids who went through Los Gatos Public Schools, but they also had tutoring on the side. So when I think of open house, I think of, everybody enrolled at the school, show up, and we'll show you our kids' art. That would trouble me for everybody, but if you're describing an open house as, please come and look at our school, because you might want to enroll your child here, three parents, I could see that being twice a month, and I could also see if you had a speaker series or a teacher training, limiting the number of people such that you would stay. Would you be minimal to that kind of a condition?
Yeah, absolutely. And is that in there?
Are you thinking that the note in number six already, that it says, "Training shall be limited to staff of the school only," and this part, "all events will not exceed the allowed hours or the maximum student and staff allowances." When parents or guests are presented for these events, they shall be counted as staff. So as I read that, I might think that that means I've got a maximum of 32 teachers and/or administrators if parents are being counted as staff, so therefore it might limit
Let me tell you the reason that we might want to limit it specifically, is because many of us have been on this planning commission for a while, and we're very much aware of what happens when conditions aren't specific, and
I understand.
it creates issues. So where it might say never to exceed the number, if we don't put a number in there, let me tell you, it'll exceed the number.
That's very common.
So if you know that you're going to, for example, have a speaker series where it makes sense based on that to limit the attendance to X number, or, so I could read that condition and say, limited to teacher staff, well, that could be from Solana Beach, that could be from San Mateo, so I may end up with, I don't know, 30 teachers. So we're just looking for specificity. It's both, I think, ultimately would be for your benefit and would be for the town's benefit. So what I, I think we're struggling with is trying to get you to be specific on what these events are and try to feel you out for how much you're willing to limit them, because I think in the end, it would be beneficial to everybody if we did that.
What about 72? In other words, I'm reading paragraph four, max is out at 72, and what if we said no event of any type would ever exceed 72 people? That, I mean, that's just one thought.
May I comment?
Commissioner Taussford.
It's a different, it's apples and oranges.
Okay.
Because it's about, it's about the intensity that this school could draw. It's a very big concern. That's why I asked the question, why you chose that space. So that's the difference. So that's why it has to be limited or not, and as I said, I know schools, when they're good schools, expand their capacity in all ways.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, this is a question from staff. I'll be
I just wanted to provide a little background on the wording of that condition, just to help you in your discussion. When we looked at that condition, we, the possibility, based on their hours of operation for the one-on-one, was that these events could potentially happen while there is instruction going on. And so the reason that it's worded as far as not to exceed that maximum was because we were intending on including that if there are, if there is one-on-one instruction going on, that the events, as well as the one-on-one instruction, is not to exceed those maximums at any given, at any point in time. So if we were to do a separate condition that, you know, may give them a separate maximum, my concern is that then we separate out those two maximums potentially, and that might get a little confusing.
Okay.
I don't think it does at all.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I don't think it does, I don't think it would at all, but that's maybe a discussion.
I agree with Commissioner Taussford. I don't think it'd be confusing, but I think that this is, we've now gone into commission discussion, not asking questions of the applicants. So are there specific questions of the applicants, and then we'll have our discussion. Commissioner Bujol.
I have specific questions.
So I still didn't get my answer on the 70 versus 72. And then also, I'd like to talk about hours of operation, 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily? Do you normally hold classes seven days a week? I mean, is that the standard?
No, no, classes are typically held four days a week. Friday is what we term a mastery day, where there'll be some students coming in Friday, depending on their schedule and their needs. And in the hours, students might be there till 9:00 at night, if a student could, might start at 4:00 and stay till 9:00. So those hours vary, not only by each student, but during the day. And, you know, as an example, we'll have a group, some kids come at 8:00, but we'll have a bunch of other kids come at 10:00, and it's staggered throughout the day.
But I'm hearing that that's not necessarily seven days a week?
No, it is not. No, it is not.
So are you open seven days a week?
No, we are not. We're open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay.
There's a description. Sorry.
Commissioner Bujol, did you have a, you had two questions, did they both get answered?
70 versus 72.
70, we'll happily concur with the 72 that staff has put into the conditions.
Commissioner Taussford.
So I thought you go to condition nine, which is, and how long a trip is, it's about field trips, or something, and then pick up and drop off, for, it's a, it's a flight, so you eliminate the vehicles that are parked and gathered by
So Commissioner Taussford is asking you about condition number nine?
It's condition number nine in the list, in the exhibit of conditions.
On field trips.
Exhibit three. That is almost, to me, somewhat contradictory, and I'm not sure what you mean And I'm not sure what you mean by that. You say, if and when trips, field trips occur, staging should be coordinated off-site if possible. Explain that to me.
Okay.
I mean, I would prefer that they were, but
So Commissioner Tausford, I'm seeing deer in the headlights looks here, and I think it's because staff wrote the conditions, not, so maybe your commissioner, maybe your question is directed to staff.
Okay, well, then let me ask the applicant how their field trips work, and how often those occur and take me on a field trip. Am I driving a car? Am I in a bus? Am I with 20 kids? Am I with two?
First, it's, field trips are very rare. We just don't do many field trips. When we do, it'll be a group of students, and it likely won't be all students, all staff. It'll be those that fits with their curriculum. And then it'll be a combination of parents driving or staff driving students to wherever we're going to go.
Or a meeting.
Or a meeting at the location also.
Do you use a larger vehicle, a small minibus?
No.
Do you, it's car?
It's, would be staff cars. Staff cars, we have forms for, I have a seatbelts, I'm licensed. Of course, teachers have background checks and all of that, and parents have to have permission too. But no, it is all in vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson.
I have a quick follow-up question to be sure that I understood your answer to Commissioner Bujhwa's question about the days of operation. So based on my research of the Fusion program, I was assuming that what you would do, and I could be assuming wrong, that on Saturday and Sunday, that you might in fact be open, but you wouldn't be holding classes on those days, but you might very well be doing tutoring, and that was probably why there was a daily hour of operation, or that you might want to do school tours, or you might even do teacher training. So, but I heard, but unless I misunderstood you, I heard you say you didn't operate on weekends, so there wouldn't be a necessity to have a daily
Right, I don't, and I apologize for misstating the, the school is available to be open on Saturday or Sundays on weekends. Typically, classes aren't scheduled at that time. There will be time when a teacher and, well, two teachers and a student might come in for tutoring. But we don't have a, I, we have very few hours on a weekend at any of our Fusion schools. It's available, again, but it's just not something we do. It's not a standard practice.
That was, that was my understanding of how you operated.
Okay.
Which I believe was different than the impression that you gave with your answer a minute ago.
Okay, so any other questions that the applicants, as opposed to questions about the conditions, which I think ought to be, probably ought to be directed to staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to look to the commission for questions of staff. Commissioner Tausford, I expect you have one about the conditions.
Yes, I do. Condition number nine. Would you please explain that to me, the if possible, trip me up?
So staff discussed this with another partner in their group. So that's why they aren't familiar with, with the condition, as it is worded. The, the discussion included that they, almost at all times, coordinate off-site for the, for the occasional field trip that their curriculum may encourage. But they wanted the ability to, say, drop off the kids at the site where it was more convenient for the parents to pick them up at, or for them to walk back, such as, and so that's why we limited it to vehicles that could be parked in parking stalls. So there wasn't that potential impact of buses or, or anything in regards to that.
Do you have, is there a loading zone at Old Town? I mean, drop off?
There's a loading zone at the rear.
In the rear?
Correct.
And is that, so no one can park there? That's just for coming and going of retail spaces?
Generally, the loading zone is restricted for loading and unloading. We don't have someone out there
Do they have special hours?
No.
So it's just all day long?
It says, it's typically a 10 by 30 space.
Right.
So it's a larger space, and those are specifically
My thought was that perhaps that could be identified as a place on these occasional field trips, that it could be loading and unloading for students. I don't know if that would be appropriate or not. So how, how was that? How could that be addressed, or could it?
The concern with that is that regular vehicles aren't permitted to park in those areas
I understand that, so this would have to be an exception. So my point is, could that be accommodated or not? It would make it easier for the school if it was a, because the parking in that, the parking there is very difficult sometimes. So it would eliminate, you know, someone who's picking up kids in that area from having to find a parking place when it was hard to find one. So that's my question, would they be able to use a loading zone like that? In this case, could there be an exception? And I don't know.
I don't think staff would suggest an exception for that because then it would potentially impact the commercial operations. You need to use that larger space.
So perhaps we should take, we should say that field, field trip staging should be off-site. But I guess that's something we'll talk about. So I had another question for staff. May I follow up? It's about parking too. Where do, you probably don't have a number count, but where do the employees of Old Town park?
I don't think staff could tell you where every employee in Old Town parks, but generally
So they're not, they're not asked to park off-site?
Not that staff is aware of.
No, there's no requirement for that.
And it also offered that typically our parking requirements are intended to accommodate both patrons and employees.
You know, I, I have a recollection that at one time, and maybe it's only during Christmas, but I thought that staff was asked to park, for Old Town was asked to park over at the parking lot by the post office?
I, I think they do do things such as that, especially during the holiday seasons for, for that specific time of year when they have the valet parking available as well in the public parking lots. So I think they do do that. The businesses, I'm not sure if that's a function of the chamber or the businesses getting together separately to try to help open up and free up parking spaces for potential patrons.
Okay, that's all for now.
Commissioner Bujhwa.
One other quick question. So for other, when we're changing retail use to another use such as restaurant, I know there's specific ordinances like 2021, where we have to make additional findings when we're displacing retail with something else. And so it, I just want to make clear, in this case, all we have to do is make the findings for the CUP. There's no, there's no other findings or ordinances above and beyond the CUP findings.
Correct, all the findings you need to make are provided in the staff report.
Okay.
Commissioner Erickson.
I'd like to introduce a motion.
Please do.
I would like to move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, specifically conditional use permit U 12 013, and that I can make the required finding that the project as proposed is categorically exempt according to section 15 301a of the state environmental guidelines as adapted by the town because a project consistent permitting a use that in an existing facility with no expansion. And that I can make the required finding that the proposed project is consistent with redevelopment plan for the central Los Gatos redevelopment project area, section 4B, and that the subject property is designated commercial, and the proposed use falls under the general commercial uses as contained in that plan. And that the, I can make the required finding that the community benefit offered by the applicant is consistent with the town's traffic policy, and that the project is in compliance with the approved planned development for this space. And I'm pleased to make, particularly pleased to make the required findings for a conditional use permit, that the proposed use of property is essential or desirable for, to the public convenience or welfare, and that we've had significant public testimony tonight about the need for this in town and beyond the town, but in particular in the town. And that the proposed use will not impair the integrity or character of the zone, and that the school use would not detract from the retail-oriented nature since it's up, since it's on a second floor level, which is consistent with the general intent of the town to have non-retail office uses, and this is kind of not exactly an office use, but closer to an office use than a retail use on the second floor in the downtown area. And that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, and that the conditions of approval address that. And that the applicant read into the record a letter from the executive director of WAST that commends the, the particular approach to education that it is, and in fact, said that they, there's high likelihood that they would be accredited. So any concern that the citizens of the town of Los Gatos would have about a, a somewhat unregulated, for-profit, independent school not offering the kind of diploma has been certified by the, the appropriate accrediting association, and that the proposed use of the property is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan, and that we would adopt the conditional use permit with the conditions of approval outlined in exhibit three with the following modifications. In condition six, that the wording be modified to read as follows. The use may include non-teaching events such as striking the phrase, facility tours, and replacing that with school tours, and adding the language not to exceed two per month. And that number nine would be modified to insert the word generally between should and be in the first sentence, and deleting the phrase if possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson. Let me ask, well, first, let me ask if there's a second. Okay, I'm in a second. And as the second or Commissioner Erickson, can I ask you if you would be willing to consider an additional condition, which would be that this matter be returned to the planning commission six months from the time of approval and opening of the school for a review of compliance with the condition, with the use permit, to update us on the accreditation progress, and also just to generally see how the school, neighbors, students, and teachers are doing with the conditions? So that we have a regularly scheduled review of the compliance with the conditional use permit.
May I ask a question of staff?
We used to do this all the time, right, Ms. Bailey?
Okay, do we, is this, would this be, without worrying about the, the specific things that, that Chair Jensen, do we, is this a normal? Just remind me, is this normal to have a CUP, have a, have a review at the end of six months for a CUP to be sure they're complying with it, and to have it come back to the commission?
We have in the past incorporated a condition like that. Generally, staff likes to, or encourages it to be done at, as a memo from staff to the planning commission and not as a public hearing item, just to update you on the CUP conditions and such.
Okay, I would, before, well, obviously, it's up to the maker of the motion, but past practice, we did do it regularly with certain conditions that were controversial or were impacting neighborhoods. And I think it would be important to have it as a public process rather than a memo because it allows those people that are interested an opportunity to come and speak to a public body about that item. That's my argument.
I would be willing to accept an amendment that would extend that period to one year. My rationale for one year is it allows them, they're on an academic cycle, so let them run a full cycle of a year so that we could judge that, and not to make any reference to accreditation since I believe we do not have the authority to require them to be accredited.
And that's fine with me, and as the secondor, I would thank you and accept the one-year return. Comments or questions on the motion, Commissioner Tausford?
Can we just get a clarification from staff? Is that a return just at the
Not a memo, a public hearing.
No, no, I understand that, but is that just at the end of the first year or every year?
My intent, my intent is that we would do it after a year, and then we would see how it's going, and if we decided to do something else, we would. If we decided not to, we wouldn't.
Thank you.
That would be my, I would be, I understood the intent of the adjustment to be that.
Commissioner Tausford.
Although I understand that there is a need for schools like this, very much, as a matter of fact. What my concern is at this point, because we, for some reason, well, the reason is stated in the staff report, we don't have a traffic report to, to go with here. I'm really concerned about the intensity, and I would like to somehow alleviate at least the intensity of parking. And I'm not sure how to do that, except with maybe crafting another condition that would be if possible, condition. And the reason is because of the hours and the number that could be parking there. And when you add up 20 teachers, that would be 15 teachers plus five administrators, and then you add up students 10th through 12th grade that are driving, we are taking up a lot of parking in a retail center. And I'm not sure if we could, but I would like to maybe throw that out as could we possibly ask that some parking happen at the area that's adjacent to the, you know, off-site adjacent to the post office? Because this is a school. And I mean, it could be here for years and years, and I hope you're successful to do that. But I, I would feel a little more comfortable with that because I don't feel comfortable with the parking at all.
Do you have a specific proposed condition that you want to propose to the maker of the motion? To see if he accepts it? Or do you want to leave that as a comment?
I was wanting it to be a discussion, but I don't know how, we can't do that. I have to make a motion, I mean, it can
Well, I think that procedurally, what you need to do is propose in addition to the motion or the condition that I don't know that, at this point, discussing a change to the motion makes sense unless you have a proposal.
Okay, so I would propose to the maker of the motion and a secondor that we create another condition or have staff help us create it that would address specific parking, the specific parking. Because it's under, it's for this one use, and the potential, you know, if they filled up every space and they used 25 teachers a day, and this became a very popular school, the potential for an increased intensity for parking could grow. So how would we do that? We would have to ask that parking be
Well, I think that Commissioner Erickson knows enough to be able to decide whether to accept that as part of the motion or not. So Commissioner Erickson.
May I ask a question of staff? So with the prior use, when the, the facility that we're discussing, the building was fully occupied by the prior uses, how many parking spaces were allocated to the upstairs area?
38 for this space.
With the prior use?
Correct, so we look at the square footage and then back
Okay, so the prior use, so, yeah, no, you answer, yeah, I understand how you get there. I just wanted you to answer the question. So this is not, this use by the, by the means in which the town calculates the projected use of parking does not, does not take away from the parking that was otherwise provided to the other tenants in that area?
Correct.
Okay, so Commissioner Erickson, with that, do you want to accept a, any proposed change to the parking requirements, or do you want to go with the motion as it's made now?
I'm comfortable with the motion as it is now because there appears to me to be no impact on the parking.
Okay, and as the secondor, I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Talisfor's comments. However, I became convinced during the public hearing and how I know that tutoring works and how I know that students used to use borders after school at high school, since my daughter was one of them, that I, I have a hard time thinking, although it's a school, so it's a problem. I, but I, but because of the staggered times and the varied ages, I feel confident enough now that the parking is okay if we're to go ahead with this, but it makes me feel more comfortable to know that this is going to come back for a review. So that's why I would feel comfortable with retaining my second without that addition. Other comments or questions? Commissioner Bouchard.
Just a, a quick comment along those lines. I have similar concerns, but I think the one-year review gives me an added level of comfort that, let's see how this works, and then we'll have a better feel for what some of the issues might be, whether it's hours of operation or special events or parking. So that, that gives me comfort. And I, I'm going to support the motion. I think, I appreciate all the parents that came out and spoke. I mean, there's obviously, it seems to be a real need for this in the community, so I'm, I'm, I hope it's really successful. And when we look at the conditions, I mean, the, the findings for the CUP, I'm very sensitive to the loss of retail in, in Old Town, but I, I would have trouble, and I'm probably stating the obvious, but this site used to be a school. This is why it's called University Avenue, so finding that the use is incompatible, I don't see how we could possibly do that. So I think it's a little bit of coming full circle, which is kind of, kind of a neat thing in Old Town. So I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bouchard. Other questions or comments on the motion? Commissioner Talisfor.
I'm sorry that we couldn't make, for better arrangements for parking, I wish that we could at, at that center address it a little bit better and, and make full use of the parking areas that are offsite. But because I, because I really do know that we need this in our town, I probably will support the motion. And it, and that it is coming back for a year review.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Erickson, seconded by the Chair. Commissioner Jensen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? None. It passes unanimously, and this is actually a matter that can be decided by the planning commission. So this is a final decision, however, there are appeal rights.
Thank you. So anyone that's not satisfied with the decision can appeal the planning commission's decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Is there a report from the Director, Director of Community Development?
The Director of Community Development's not here, but in lieu of that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be you, Mr. Paulson? Or the person sitting in the chair designated Director of Community Development?
So just going to give you some updates on the council meeting from September 4th. So there was a study session, as I think some of you may have attended and/or watched. The two conversations that they had were the council providing direction on potential amendments to the story poll policy. So the council provided direction to staff, and that's intended to come back, I believe, in October or November for actual consideration and/or action. And they also discussed the code enforcement policies and procedures, and also solicited, staff solicited input from the council, from policy direction perspective. One of those outcomes was that they are going to, we are going to look into funding a temporary, part-time and/or contract code enforcement officer to try to deal with some of the issues that I think surround some of the discussion this evening, as well as other issues throughout the town relating to code enforcement. The council also approved the conditional use permit for Lexington House, which was the 40 North Santa Cruz Avenue as part of the domus space. In their findings, they did state that they did not believe that the planning commission erred because of ordinance 2021, specifically dealing with displacing retail with restaurants. And they also added a condition that the CUP subject any future ordinances for formula restaurants. The town doesn't currently have a formula restaurant policy or ordinance, but that's something that's potentially under consideration in the near future. So should this use go out and another restaurant come in that is formula, they'll have to comply with whatever regulations are in place at that time. And that concludes Director's report.
Commissioner Erickson has a question for you.
May I ask you, Mr. Paulson, could you help us understand as, as a way for us to be more fully educated about the expectations of the council, what their findings were that supported their, their not taking the similar action where they didn't, where they, where they in fact took action to replace retail with a restaurant? What findings? And I ask that because I'm trying to be educated so that we could understand what our expectations are.
I'm going to let Sandy handle that.
Oops, our new, our new Director of Community Development.
Assistant Director. Yes, the council said a couple things. One is that the policy, the council had the latitude, since the policy says it's discouraged, not prohibited. So they could make that interpretation. And that the audience that was there that night, a lot, the majority of the people spoke in favor of the project, and they provided convincing testimony to the council. And it was, they said it was different and unique, and it helped them shape their decision in the matter.
Are you educated now?
So let me see if I can repeat what the, what those findings were. That the ordinance, since it discourages, leaves wiggle room for the council, so they exercised their wiggle room with no particular findings other than that they had wiggle room. And second, that there were a whole bunch of public that came and spoke in, in favor of it. And so, and I, I believe if I listened correctly to the, to the meeting, one of the other observations was it was a large number of people, and there were people who hadn't come before the council before. So that would lead me to believe that one, that, that leads me to a strategy if I were an applicant.
Commissioner Bouchard.
Oh.
I just wanted to, I think another thing that they talked about was the division of uses.
That's correct.
And that was divided into four and then a five, and four of the five are retail. So I think that was something that weighed heavily in their decision. But I just want to be clear, since they did not find that we erred, was it new information or was it, was it on a matter of policy that they made it, were able to overturn our decision?
It'd be new information and the policy, yeah.
Keep in mind, this was a matter that had to be referred.
Oh, so it was not an appeal, so.
Yours was a recommendation, it wasn't.
Yeah, that's right.
So there was no need to make that finding.
There was no need to make that finding, okay.
Yeah, and they did notice Tom O'Donnell's comment about the, the number of uses, and that was an interesting thing. So they did pick up on that, and they did quote that actually in their presentation of what Mr. O'Donnell said.
Okay, Commission Matters.
I will not be in attendance at the September 26 meeting.
And we'll miss you.
Thank you. I will be out of town, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your presence.